I'm not being very mad, I'm just chasing you. Hi. This is the first time I've ever seen you. I'm so happy to be here. 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 If everything will take a seat, would you like to continue?
Okay, as the last few people are taking their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. My name's Anne Lampy, I'm the Council President for Palos Verdes, and on behalf of our sixteen PTAs and our council, I'd like to welcome you tonight. We're really excited, we've been looking forward to this evening for a long time because we thought there was a need to get information out to the parents, and we've been working with the school district to do this night, so I'd like to welcome you. I'd like to go over a few of the rules for you. Because we have so many people, we actually had two hundred and seventy-five RSPPs and we're anticipating probably more than that because sometimes we forget to RSVP. And we did ask that people submit their questions by cards, we will be collecting those. We have a lot of incredible speakers tonight, we want to get through all of those speakers before we open up for questions because we think that some of the speakers will probably be able to answer those questions for you. So, I just want to apologize in advance, if you raise your hand for a question, we're going to ignore you. I apologize now, I know it's rude, I'm sorry. But we can't, we just can't do it with this many people, so please, there are cards all around the room, they'll answer questions, we will try to answer as many of them as possible, and with time, I'm going to hand the microphone over to Walter Williams.
Thank you, Anne. I want to thank you for attending this evening and welcoming to one of several parent informational nights throughout the district on the Common Core State Standards, and also eventually one of the new state assessment system. My role tonight is primarily to recognize and thank the people who organized the evening, volunteer to serve on the panel, or are working hard at the school sites to enhance our instructional program. First, I want to make sure we recognize the PTA leadership, Anne and Tim especially at the front table, I know Julie's hiding her eyes. The success of the school district is about partnerships, and the PTA are great partners with the school district. I want to recognize at least two of the board members that are here this evening, Joan Ramon is sitting over here on the side, and Tony Clodus is a great organizer in the center. Can I have the principals of the room, Sam, because this is the people where the rubber hits the road at the school sites, all the principals. Now what I'd like to do is introduce our panel members, so bear with me. And first starting with Joan Ramon, who's, I think, could actually stand, so you can see where they are, is our Director of Curriculum Instruction. Joan has over twenty-five years of experience in public education, the majority of which has been with the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District. Before joining the district management team in two thousand and twelve, as Director of Curriculum Instruction, Joan was the Principal of La Nada Bay Elementary School. As Director of Curriculum Instruction, among many, many duties that we give her to do, Joan oversees the professional development plan for the transition to the Common Core State Standards. Dr. Yenise Prinsky, Sam, just to be recognized. Dr. Prinsky's a professor of mathematics, Meredith Center for Mathematics and Science Education, Department of Mathematics, California State University of Domingo Hills. Dr. Prinsky earned her BA in Mathematics from Case Western Reserve University, her MA in Mathematics from Kent State, and her PhD in Higher Education with the Cognitive Mathematics from UCLA. She has over forty years of junior high school experience, which actually all her parents are awarded to Evan somewhere, community college and university teaching experience, and has received a number of teaching awards. The California University Domingo Hills Mathematical Project under her direction has provided meaningful professional development opportunities for more than a thousand teachers in mathematics. She's a Palos Verdes resident and has grandchildren who attend Palos Verdes schools. Dr. Anthony Clodus, maybe you have no time. He's currently the President of the Palos Verdes School Board, he's an Assistant Professor of Education at Pepperdine University Graduate School of Education and Psychology. Dr. Clodus has special interests and expertise in urban education, he teaches several classes for Pepperdine University Master of Arts in Education with Teaching Prudential and Learning Technology Programs. Dr. Clodus was first elected to the PBB USD School Board in two thousand and nine and was recently appointed to a second term. He lives in Palos Verdes, stays with his family, his children attend PBB USD schools. Gina Settle, on the way. She's the Principal of Solia Auto Elementary School. Gina first started working for PBB USD in nineteen ninety-six. In two thousand and two, she joined the teacher staff at La Nada Bay Elementary where she taught fourth and fifth grade. She has served as a member of the district's Technology Advisory Committee, summer school principal, and in two thousand and twelve, Gina joined the district office as an instructional coach to support the transition to the Common Core. In two thousand and thirteen, she was appointed Principal of Solia Auto Elementary. Michelle Pierce, the Teacher Activist in Elementary School. Michelle has been in the district for twelve years, all at Rancho Vista. For the past seven years, she has taught first grade, but also has experience as a kindergarten and TK teacher. She has three sons who attend PB schools, she's a product of the PB schools, and according to her bio, she loves teaching first grade, so thank you. So Michael Wong, the Teacher of Palos Verdes Elementary School. Michael has worked for PBB USD for the past eight years, he's a United States teacher at PBIS, and has served as Department Chair for four of those years. He has a master's degree in education with an emphasis in computer technology, and has happily embraced the technological upgrades Common Core has offered. Since two thousand and eleven, Michael's provided professional development for teachers in the field of technological uses in the classroom. In two thousand and twelve, he received his administrative credential, served as an interim Vice Principal of PBIS, and in two thousand and thirteen, was selected to be part of the district's Common Core Teacher Association. So thank you, Michael, for joining us. And then with Chris Wong, Teacher of Palos Verdes Elementary School. It doesn't look like it, but Chris is going to teach for twenty-two years. Started when he was fourteen or something, so he's taught at Palos Verdes Elementary School District for the last fifteen years, Chris has taught at Merrill East, Rich Grass, Palos Verdes Elementary School, and is currently teaching Biology in ninth grade Abbott at Palos Verdes Elementary High School. And again, I want to thank all of you for volunteering this evening, preparing and taking your time to join us this evening on the day, so thank you. So we're going to have to turn it over to Joan Ramon for the overview of the program.
Good evening, thank you for coming out tonight, it's nice to see the room so full. I can share with you that last year, as we began our first phase of transitioning to the Common Core, we spent a lot of time talking about parent education evenings, and I tried a couple, and did not get this kind of turnout. So, I'm glad you're here tonight, thank you. Whatever has caused you to be here, it's great that you're here because this is all about information and understanding what we're doing and why we're doing it, and how it is good for kids. I know before we got into that though, Anne wanted to make a quick comment.
And it's not that I like the microphone, believe me. I just wanted to really quickly let you know that the PTA purposely did not, we're a co-sponsor of this event with the district. We did not have any handouts tonight, one because we're trying to be green, and two because we're going to have a lot of things posted on the district site. There are some handouts that have been given out tonight, I need you to know from the PTA that they are not from the PTA, they are not endorsed by the PTA, we're not allowed to do that, so I just wanted to put that out there for you, they're not from the district as well, so with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Joan and hopefully not talk again.
So, for anyone of you that knows me in the district, I see a lot of my former parents from La Nada Bay, and teachers who've worked with me, brevity is not my strong suit. So Gina has some marbles over there to throw at me because I've been given about fifteen minutes to take you through an overview of the Common Core. It is by no means the whole story, it's the beginning of the story. And it'll give you an overview, it'll help you understand why this is good for kids and good for education and good for our community, and it'll maybe help you understand a little bit of how we as a district are approaching this. Because we do have the freedom as a district to approach the implementation of Common Core the way that we see fit and best for our students and community. So briefly, what are the Common Core State Standards? They currently exist and have been adopted by the state of California and forty-five states around the country in English Language Arts, ELA is English Language Arts, and Math. History and science are coming, but for the current implementation, the focus is on English Language Arts and Math. But it doesn't let the history and science teachers off the hook, because in the Common Core, literacy is the keystone, and it is the responsibility in all content areas to help make our children and students literate and teach literacy skills in all the content areas. The Common Core defines not only the skills and knowledge students should have, but the skills that they should understand and be able to do. Under our current system of standards that, and make no mistake about it folks, we've had standards for decades, standards are not a new thing. We don't make up our curriculum here in Palos Verdes, it's dictated by adopted California state standards and frameworks, but we as a district have always been able to work from that as a foundation, build and enhance and enrich that curriculum to meet the needs of our students. So, the common standards that we've worked under before Common Core focused primarily on what students should know, what can they show us that they know. Our current standard of assessment under STAR, under CST, asks children to identify what they know, very little about what can they do with that knowledge. The Common Core takes it to that next level. What can you do with the knowledge, what skills does it give you, and how can you demonstrate that you understand and can apply that knowledge that you have attained? We still have a content-based knowledge in Common Core, but it takes it to that next level. They've been adopted by forty-five out of the fifty states, and it's designed to ensure that all students are provided with rigorous, challenging coursework, and it's all framed around college and career readiness skills. Getting them ready for college and career. I was going to say next slide, that's me. Okay. You know, the National PTA has a statement that really, I think, kind of defines some of the concerns that may be out there. The Common Core State Standards define and help shape what students will learn, but they don't dictate how students will learn that material, or how teaching professionals should teach it. That is left to the state and the district to decide. There is a lot of local control in how we design instruction to support the standards of the Common Core. Some of the features are, yes, folks, it is based on evidence and research, I cite a few at the end of this PowerPoint, you can get them when you download this off the site that the PTA is going to put it on. It's based on many, many, many years of research and evidence, going way back. And the biggest part that took that for us as teachers and educators is the strategies on how we are going to implement this are definitely research-based strategies. Strategies for instruction that we are discussing as a district with teachers and administrators about that have proven results to be effective and direct correlation to student achievement. They are aligned with college and work expectations, they are focused and coherent K-12. Now, that may sound like a little bit of teacher speak, so let me explain what that means. The work starts in kindergarten and ends in twelfth grade, and it builds from year to year to year, and teachers can see how that happens. We had a meeting today, I was with elementary teachers all day today, powerful discussions about what instruction needs to look like in the classroom, how can we shape this instruction and move kids along? And Michelle can tell you, as a first grade teacher, we were looking at documents that say, well, this is what they cover in kindergarten, this is where they'll be in first grade, as she has them, and this is where they'll need to be by second grade, and what they'll be doing in second grade. And you can look at that K-12 through the whole system. Chris, as a teacher, can look at what the literacy skills are back in first grade, see how they build, they're consistent. You might think that's always been the case with our current standards, but it hasn't been. They have not been that clearly articulated. This is a powerful tool for teaching, and in a district like this where we don't have a lot of transience, the kids that start with us in kindergarten pretty much finish with us from twelfth grade, how powerful is that? That there is a vertically articulated curriculum that every teacher knows and is implementing and moving forward, not cookie cutter, but based on the same foundations. It increases the depth of knowledge. Again, I said, our current system is at very preliminary recall, reproduction, basic application of knowledge. The Common Core creates the expectation that, once you have that knowledge, you are using it to actually develop skill and understanding and apply that, and be prepared for college and career, which asks you to do that. They are internationally benchmarked, and they are going to be assessed by the assessment system called SBAC, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. There are two of the forty-five states, there are two assessment systems, PARC and SBAC, they are very similar. In California, elected to go to SBAC for a variety of reasons, and that's the assessment system that will become operational in the spring of 2015. I'll talk a little at the end about the field test, we'll be doing this spring. I keep wanting to tell somebody, I'm moving. Okay, here's some of those research-based instructional practices that are embedded in the Common Core that we want to make sure, in order to get children to these higher levels of thinking that we are using. And every one of these is tied to data that shows a direct correlation to student achievement. We have as a district in our professional development been talking about a lot of these, identified a few that we focused on this year. If you raise your hand, if you've had a child come home talking about learning targets. Few people in the room? Okay. Let's not have a lot of elementary people in here. That's one of the things we're focusing on, developing academic vocabulary from kindergarten through twelfth grade, so that kids can understand what they're being asked to do and understand how they learn. Flexible grouping, so that it's not all about collaborative work, everything's not done as a group project, and no individual learning, there is absolutely individual accountability. Flexible grouping, balancing the curriculum, direct teacher instruction, student engagement activities, a variety of things. So, you can look up any of these kinds of research-based strategies online and find the research that supports those. Where do the standards come from? They came from the National Governors Association and the Council of State School Officers, and they were created and built with many, many teachers involved, parent input, school administrators, experts from across the country, from the business community, higher education, and state leaders. They did not come from the federal government. Forty-five states and the District of Columbia have adopted these standards, I think I've said that already. Okay. Support for the Common Core does exist out in the educational community. The Chiefs of State School Officers, that's a whole list, but I highlighted some of them. The College Board, I know many of you here are concerned about what college is going to be like for your students, or the application process and getting into college, they support this. The National Parent Teachers Association, State Higher Executive Officers, the Business Roundtable, there's a lot of support for the Common Core. The California Teachers Association sums it up really nicely, the Common Core will create a clear, consistent level of knowledge for our public school students no matter where they live. It will deepen problem-solving skills and critical thinking, promote greater opportunity for all kids, bring back flexibility and creativity. And you're going to hear from these three teachers about how that hasn't been so allowed under the no child left behind standards. And they have that freedom now. The call for more collaborative decisions, teachers are involved, you are here because you are involved. I can tell you, when we transitioned to the last set of standards we've been working under back in ninety-seven or ninety-eight, I was a teacher over at Point Vasini, parents weren't involved in that discussion, teachers weren't involved, I mean, teachers were involved in developing them, but we were basically given the new standards and said, you're going to be tested on this, and we went forward and figured that out. Common Core has involved a lot more collaboration than that. And yes, implementation is the key to success. How we do this in Palos Verdes is going to be the key to whether or not we've successfully transitioned. It's the key to everything we do, how we implement it. If we don't implement it well, we won't do it well. So, we're putting a lot of time and energy, and again, twenty-five years in this district, or twenty-three of my twenty-five years in this district, I can tell you, the systemic organizational approach to teacher training is the greatest I have ever experienced, as a teacher, as an administrator, as now someone at the district office. It is powerful, it is exciting to see. Again, the CTA, and I put this in there because just to say, you know, there's a few comments I wanted to make sure we focused on. The CCS does put teachers back in control of crafting and tailoring education. Teachers can decide how to approach what they're teaching. It does allow some flexibility, well, AB484 allowed us flexibility. The reason they suspended testing for this year was to allow these teachers in the classrooms to start making the transition, and not have a foot in both worlds, and not know which way to be because who are they accountable for? The student assessments are formative and summative. Formative means it helps teachers guide instruction, it's not about passing or failing, but where do I go with the class, with this student, with this group of students? And summative tells us, when we want them to be to a place where they can know and understand and demonstrate that, we provide assessments that do that. And the Common Core, if it has done nothing else, as I said just thirty seconds ago, if it has done nothing else, it has engaged this educational community here in Palos Verdes, and in California, and nationwide, in the most robust professional development ever, ever. That can't be a bad thing, teachers talking to teachers, learning from each other, sharing ideas, it's unbelievable. I had these two in my office the other day preparing, you know, talking about tonight, and I couldn't stop them from talking to each other, and are you trying this as a first grade teacher or an eighth grade teacher? I can tell you, in ten years as a teacher, in eleven years as a principal, I never talked to twelfth grade English teachers. These teachers are talking to twelfth grade English teachers all the time. To have a twelfth grade English teacher and a first grade teacher sitting at a table talking about instruction, that's powerful. That's powerful in a district like this. Okay, what does it mean to us though as a district? We can talk all about what the standards are and all that, and it's a lot of what I've been saying. It really means we have focused district-wide, TK through twelfth grade professional development, articulated, collaborative, powerful professional development. There are collaboration opportunities across all the grade levels. We are looking at systemically as an organization, what are those effective strategies we can use for how we assess, evaluate, support our teachers' learning? You are all parents in this district, and I know you have all experience, you've had one great teacher, and one teacher that you go, wait a minute, that's a very different kind of teacher, not as effective. We want to create more consistency, so that every child in every classroom is getting to experience those same kinds of effective strategies for learning. We want to build in our teachers an understanding of what these research-based strategies and practices look like, not just what they think they are, not just what feels good. And I looked at Bill McDonald, one of our new principals, who talked about, it's not about what we think or feel, it's about what the research says works, and that's where we need to be taking teachers, and that's what this conversation is about. And again, I've already said it, it's a well-articulated K-12 instructional program that supports all students. And when I was building this PowerPoint, I kept wanting to write at the bottom and I had to slap my hand, how can that be a bad thing? And the Common Core says kids deserve more. What does this mean to our students? More, it doesn't mean we're not doing a lot and great things, but we can do more and we can do better. And I know you as parents would not tolerate it if we said, we're done, we're there, now we're going to change the program, it's good. You expect us to always be striving for excellence, and the Common Core is a vehicle that allows us to make sure that our kids, all kids, have access to a rigorous curriculum, have opportunities to apply what they're learning in more and more complex ways, because you all know, the world is getting more and more complex. They're going to be solving problems, and we've all heard it, right, that we don't even know yet. Okay, that's coming. More instruction in learning environments that supports all of them. Jody Castell and Becky Cash and I met last night with Special Ed Parents, anyone in the room from that meeting? And we were talking, because they heard all this last night, but we were talking about what does this mean for students with special needs? Where's the access for them? This is about all students. Fostering critical thinking and problem solving. You want that for your children, I know you do. Learning partnerships with teachers. It's not just about the teacher knows what they're teaching that day, and it's the kid's job to figure it out. It's students coming in and understanding what they're supposed to learn that day, what they're going to do to learn it, and how they're going to demonstrate it. And what eventually maybe they need if they can't demonstrate it. Becoming more of a partner with the teacher aiming for the same target, as opposed for the teacher knowing the target and the kid's trying to figure out what it is. I skipped over complex reading and writing in all content areas. This is embedded in Common Core, the writing and the reading is there, it exists. Relevant, meaningful, motivating learning opportunities, more fostering creative thinking and encouraging and building communication skills. We were at a conference recently and they talked about the number-one skill required in the workforce today, whatever your profession, is communication skills. We don't give our kids enough practice, they do studies that show, teachers taught us, and Michelle, what was it they said the other day? Sixty-eight percent? Forty-eight minutes out of an hour in a classroom. Teachers got good communication skills. But we want the kids talking, should be reversed. And as we talk about implementing Common Core, those are the discussions we're having. Engagement with Twenty-First Century Tools. Hey, I was a mentor teacher back in nineteen eighty-nine or ninety-two, and we put the first apples into the classrooms. We used to lock them down, Willis made us lock them down because, God forbid, somebody was going to cart that big thing away. We've been putting technology in classrooms for a long time, we've been behind the curve on that for a long time. If Common Core is the vehicle that's helping us get out on that wagon and move forward and give these kids the tools of their generation, then hallelujah, we're doing the right thing, and train's going to get us there. And... And real-world applications and experience, that's how you make it meaningful and relevant. And certainly more collaboration with peers and in classrooms around the world. Gina had a parent night at her school the other night, and one of her teachers was talking about the collaboration her students were doing with kids across the country on weather. And whole, talking with them every day, what's the weather there, tracking the weather across the country, and how much more relevant and meaningful that is. So NEA believes the Common Core states, "Standards have the potential to provide access to a complete and challenging education for all children." And I ask you this, if you want this for your child, then you have to want it for all children. We certainly, as educators, want it for all children. And that is our goal and our commitment and our passion as educators in this district. Okay, so a little bit about the nuts and bolts. How am I doing on time? In one minute? Good, okay, this is the easy part, okay? Because this, we could never cover the full extent of it. But in English Language Arts, again, remember literacy is the responsibility of all. But basically, one of the things you hear a lot about is they're taking Shakespeare out of the Common Core, and they're not going to read literature anymore. But there's an important word up there that says balance. Balancing informational and literary texts is part of the shift in Common Core. We want kids, and by the time they move into high school, more of their reading is across the content areas, not in the literature classes, of course, informational texts. Remember, college and career ready. Think of the last time you went to work and someone asked you to write a poem for your proposal or read a poem, okay? The writing and reading that you do in the workforce is expository. And that was one of the deficits for students coming through the system. Building knowledge in the disciplines, so learning about the world of reading across in all content areas. Complexity, reading more challenging material more closely, Michael's going to talk about that a little bit more. How we tackle more complex material with even struggling learners. Writing from sources, evidence-based writing. They can't just write about what they think or feel anymore, they can't. But the majority of writing is founded in evidence, text-based, citing the sources. If you have fifth graders and they went through that year of writing persuasive essays and, you know, why we shouldn't have, we should have longer recess. It's not anymore about, "We should have longer recess because I like to play with my friends." That can be part of it, but it's also a good reason because, in the video I saw on Children's Health, they cited how extra time and fresh air and exercise increases the ability to learn. And so that's a good reason for longer recess, okay? And using academic vocabulary across the grade level. So in other words, building knowledge, reading and writing based on evidence, and complex texts in academic language. Oh, it's me. It's children and you, it's totally you. Okay, so quickly, we're going to go through some of these slides. This breaks it down by grade level, by fourth, fifth grade, we want fifty percent of reading and fiction and nonfiction, but remember, that includes, it's kind of already that because it includes science and social studies and other content areas, not just reading Writing, same thing. There's three really focused areas of writing, there's a lot of opportunities for writing in Common Core, opinion, argument, informational essay, narrative, and you can see, the narrative doesn't go away, but opinion and argument, as you go through the grades, takes on more Just quickly, here's an example of a fifth-grade ELA question. Basically, you could answer this question without ever having read the article on hurricanes. You read the passage and decide which sentence should be added as the last sentence of the first paragraph to state the topic of the report. You could identify, if you understood what a topic sentence is, you could identify that without ever having read the passage, as opposed to reading this text and then having to choose statements that add appropriate supporting detail. So that's a bit of the difference. You have to have read the detail and understood it first to know what that next piece would be. In this, for an upper grade, it talks about, and it's not showing up, my colors are not showing up, but basically, oh, just explaining who you are, just explain, very simply, as opposed to writing an argument describing how something affected an outcome, describing how it was determined, explaining the similarities and differences, and using details. So you can see the difference in the kinds of assessment questions. Math, the math, again, on the left side there, the focus is narrower and deeper, and I know this puzzles a lot of people concerned that it means we're dumbing down the curriculum. That is absolutely not true. I spent, I've spent hours with the six, twelve math people. We're working very hard to figure out how to make this transition. And when you walk by the department chair from Penn High, Mike Lehold, and he's looking over the Algebra I standards with other teachers and says, "Wow, this is way more intense than what we're teaching in Algebra I right now, way more rigorous." So his next question becomes, "What are your, so how are we going to get those kids ready in these transition years?" But I stopped, and I said, "Really, Mike, because I hear a lot of concern that math is easier." "No, no," he says, "no, it's not." There is a narrower focus so kids can spend more time learning and doing. And you see that a little bit more in the earlier grades, K-2, more focus on number, not so quick to rush them into some of those higher operations, so that they can build that strong foundation that will then allow them to go anywhere. But the real important part in math is this, and Dr. Kinsky's going to talk about that in a few minutes, the standards for mathematical practice are really changing the way we'll do math instruction. And this is where a lot of the focus of instruction should be, learning how, it's now a guaranteed part of the curriculum. Time, okay, matter of time. Okay, so I'm going to go through, these were some, oh, just quickly, math, the way we used to ask it on CST, more complex here. Simply determining the surface, and here it's more applying it and using shapes, gives you some examples, I'm sorry. Okay, I had a really cute, funny video to show you, but I won't, but if you download this and you want to see a cute little real-life math application, check out this YouTube. Okay, so basically, where are we at in PV? Last year, we were in the awareness phase, this year, we're transitioning. Thank you, Leah, for the arrow. And next year, will be an implementation year. We want to see more of this going on in our classrooms, but really, after we give that first Heart of Balance assessment in 2015, we will really see the transformations begin. I tell the teachers we're working with all the time, the journey is the destination. We'll never be there, because we'll always be refining and improving. There's some information on how you can support your children, many of the ways you already do, just interjecting things like nonfiction, evidence, helping children struggle. There's a phrase we're coming to use a lot in these discussions, productive struggle. It's important. And perseverance. We are not a culture that allows productive struggle and perseverance. We want the answer, we want it now. Tell me now, am I right? But in the Common Core, we allow kids that opportunity to struggle productively, because that's where the real learning is. So there's some suggestions there, I'm sorry, I'm going to move through this quickly. We are giving the S Backfield Test this year, so we'll find out what it's really like to give this test online. It's not testing the students, it's testing the test. And we can probably address some of those questions more in the question-answer place. Okay, and then I did cite some research there, if you wanted to find some of the research sources behind the Common Core. And also, there were two authors for math, and I'm sure Dr. Kinsky is familiar with these gentlemen, but there's a slide on here that gives you two sources for math, if you want to check out some of the research for math. Hattie, John Hattie, who's written a book evaluating the evidence and meta-analysis of over eight hundred studies, all in support of, you know, all the support, the discussion we're having about Common Core, and adding it up way back in 2001, also leads us to some of that, okay? So, not all of it, tip of the iceberg, but hopefully gives you a little bit of an understanding of Common Core. I'm going to introduce Dr. Kinsky, I know she needs to change her computer over from mine to hers, and she's going to, and by the way, she's working with us, she's going to be working with our math teachers directly and coming to talk to our teachers at our CIA meetings, our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment meetings, and going to become a real partner with us in this conversation.
How many of you have heard me before? It's your fault I'm here. Thanks. While we change out, I bring my own tech support, because I don't, I must admit, I don't do Windows, I go like in an app first. That reminded me, 2001, they wrote adding it up. How many years ago was that? Quick, quick, well, thank you. And there's been a lot of research since that. It's a wonderful document, there's been an awful lot of research since then. Does anybody know when the first iPhone came out? Two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven was the first iPhone. How many years passed now, are we? Six years. Do you think that the world has stood still and nothing has happened since the first iPhone? Can you name all the things that have happened? Can you name that the Voyager went into a, what was it? Outside the, I got to tell you. I got to tell you, a lot of stuff has happened. So if anybody walks up to me and says, "I always hate math," or any kid comes up to me and they say, "Hate math, I hate math," I ask them, "Give me their iPhone, their iPad." I ask them not to use that TV, not to use YouTube, okay? The first thing we have to do in this world is stop those messages. We are probably about to switch from AT&amp;T to Verizon on our iPhones. We've been on AT&amp;T since 2007. And if you want to know why, look at their latest ad. Everybody does math. Math is fantastic, and it's about time everybody knew that. And you're going to find out my attitude about the Common Core as soon as we get this out. But while we're doing that, the Common Core standards in the state of mathematics and mathematics, in the state of California, in mathematics, are in this notebook. The official, the official, can I do that? Let me just put it down here. What happens is after standards are accepted, as John told you, they go into a framework for the state of California. This is the last one, 2006, with the old standards in it. I just downloaded, I just downloaded the draft of the new framework. I haven't had a chance to look at it, I'm sorry about that, I have prepared for tonight. So, I know what it's like, I know what the process is, most people do not know what the process is. It is the framework in the state of California that directs how we teach, well, not how we teach, what we should teach. With the Common Core, it will give us more information on how we should teach mathematics. And there's one in every subject matter. So let's see what I have to say about this. I'll be able to cut some of mine short, shortening. Okay, what we're going to do here, I don't have to do much on the history of the Common Core standards, because John gave it to you. We're going to, and I just talked to you about the process in the state of California, and believe me, a lot of people are involved in that, a lot of people. It is the biggest fight you've ever seen. Because everybody, you know what they do? I served on a committee once for what should be in the competencies for freshmen coming into college, okay? The UC, CSU, you know all those A-through-F requirements? Well, there's requirements in math, right? What should students know how to do? What should they learn and know how to do? Okay, I was invited to be on this committee. It's an important committee, because every district has to get their math courses and all their other courses approved for A-through-F or G or whatever is requirements, for both UC, CSU, and even the community colleges, okay? This document went to the Intersegmental Coordinating Council for the three systems. So, I was asked to serve on it, similar to, I was asked to serve on this. And one group, it was in the middle of the math wars, you've probably heard about them, maybe you follow them, they're ongoing, okay? One group said, "We're so glad you're on it, because you think right." And somebody who, I will say, was from the other side, came up to me at a different time and said, "Oh, I'm so glad you're on this." Nobody knew where my viewpoint was. We had a great committee, but I got to tell you, the wordsmithing that goes into stating these things, trust me, I don't want to serve on. You heard about the history of the Common Core, actually, they've been working on Common Core standards in English and in math, English Language Arts and in mathematics since 1996, okay? There's a process. Anybody wants to see this, really? You can look at it, I can show it, I can give this to you. But here's the important thing for me and for us in mathematics, let's see if I missed one, no. The Common Core standards for mathematics define what children should understand, what students should understand and be able to do. These standards include expectations for both content and practice. Now, what there are, different from the standards before, every grade level has standards. What they are in mathematics is a set of content standards about the mathematics, and then a set of aid practice standards. That's where it all comes together. What should kids be able to do? Like John was talking about, what should they be able to do in writing? How should they be able to argue their point in writing? Not persuasive argument, but give the reasons based on some valuable research about why it's good to have the recess longer for health reasons. That was great. Okay, so if you see this one, let me just see that one. This is a graphic, the source is down there, and what it is, is it is telling you what the content areas are in each grade level. You notice the geometry is every grade level. Eighth-grade geometry, though, will be having some transformational geometry. That's something new for the teachers. They've probably learned it at one time, but that's something new. Then there's other, the other areas should be familiar to you. Measurement and data, grades K-through-five, statistics and probability come in in six, seven, and eight. So these are the content standards, right? Each grade level will have content standards of what the kids should know, and these things have been determined by people who trust me, do know their mathematics, right? But what really excites me is the mathematical standards, the mathematical practices standards. These rest on important processes and proficiencies with longstanding importance in mathematics education. And my goal, and one of my goals tonight, is to let you see and understand what that's all about, so that you can help your own kids. I should explain to you, my children are out of school already. I do have two grandchildren here at PV, and I'm not going to tell you who they are, or what schools they go to. But this is a little graphic, there's much more verbiage on this, on what they really stand for, but the one on the side says, "Make sense of problems and persevere in solving them." That's one of the most important. My husband and I call that the white blank paper syndrome, where a piece of paper, it may have happened to you, or it happens to your kids, it sits there, and it's, I don't know what to do. Help me, do it for me, I don't know what to do, I'm no good at math, I hate it. One of my daughters, not this one, once said that to me. She said that to me, she said, I, she came home, look, I was a teacher, right, a math teacher, she came home and she said, she was a teacher, "I hate math." And, push my button, huh? Mom's a math teacher, "I hate math." "I hate math." The answer is, "Oh, I'm sorry you hate it. There's no real reason to hate it. I'm going to help you with it, but you're going to do it anyways." You know what? Learning math is difficult, it's complicated, but they need to know math, just like they need to read, what do they read in high school here? The Odyssey, Iliad, Shakespeare? Are those easy? Hey, I loved it when I read The Odyssey in high school. But I ought to warn you, English Language Arts was my second major. So here we go with the hook to persevere. This is a middle school test, and if you read it, you might fall asleep. Determine the volume of a rectangular prism. You may know what that is? A shoebox, yeah. That is nine feet long, 12 feet wide, and 15 inches deep. And what kids do is say, "Let's see, what's that formula? What's that formula?" Okay. And then, what would be the volume of a rectangular prism that was one and a half times as long and one and a half times as wide as the original prism? Boring, repetitive, and kid has 10 of those to do tonight. Here's an alternative to encourage mathematical perseverance. They're asked, and preferably, as a matter of fact, they would be asked to look at this in their group and talk about it. The seventh graders at Sunview Middle School, notice I didn't put in one of your middle schools, were helping to renovate a playground for the kindergartners in nearby elementary school, city regulations, blah, 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 blah. Much more in depth, much more to write what they're thinking, and write what they do, and discuss it, and come up with a poster as a solution, outlining their solution. I love word problems. I would not assign, assign 20 or 30 practice problems. I would assign five practice problems in a given night, maybe six. Let me tell you why. And this is what I did. By the way, I got all those teaching boards. Within five problems, actually within three, you know if the kid knows what they're doing or you know if they don't. If they don't, there's no sense practicing more problems because it's not going to come down, "Oh, my God, that's how you do it." That doesn't happen. There's a reteaching that needs to happen. If they do know how to do it, they're just going to turn off by the time they get to number eight, 10. You think more is better? No. And the problems are not significantly different. This is a teacher decision issue. But I would also put in, with those five practice problems, three really meaningful word problems. And if so, if I have to, whether I liked math or not, I would help them. Go work on it together. Okay? That is what the Common Core Standards practices are about in mathematics. Here's a question for you. Now, those of you who I talked to before don't get the answer. Defining even. It is important in mathematics to give clear and logical explanations. This is one of the practices, one of these mathematical practices. How would you answer the following? What is the definition of an even number? Explain why the sum of two even numbers is always even. I'll let you think about that a little while. Here's a sample Common Core test item from, you call it S-Back? Okay, Smart evals. Two sides of a right triangle have lengths of square root of 10 units and square root of 6 units. There are two possible lengths for the third side. Part A says, what is the shortest possible side length in units? And part B says, what's the longest? A very good problem. And you'll notice I even left in where they show they're going to have to be able to have the computer skills to come, to punch on the right. Trust me, they'll have the computer skills. I watch six-year-olds on the iPads, okay? Especially in this area. Here's a typical common CST one. It's really basically the same problem, in a way, except this says, "Oh, I just have to use, that's a right triangle, hopefully. I just have to figure out the hypotenuse." And you know what they're going to do? They're going to take this 17 and square it, and 15 and square it, and add the two together, and come out with the wrong answer. Yeah, because it's 17 squared equals question mark squared plus 15 squared. You all remember the Pythagorean theorem. School rabbit. A squared plus B squared equals C squared, right? No, it's right. But I can tell you right now that that wrong answer is going to be in there. Okay? But that is a CST. Compare it to what I just asked you to do with the square root of 10, square root of 6. Find the other two possible. First of all, it tells me that there are two possibilities because it's not telling you which one's which. Okay? Sample Common Core problem. I don't know if you can probably read this. The reason I want to show you this one is this asks them to show that Rachel is right or Rachel is wrong. It's argumentative. Argumentative? Argumentative. So it asks you to show how you could argue that Rachel is right and how you can argue that Rachel is wrong. And then you can have a class discussion on, well, what is it? Okay? NAP, I can hear NAP mentioned today. NAP is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. They test fourth grade and eighth grade every, every four years, something like that. The, and we're compared internationally, too. We don't always do so well. NAP has some very good problems on it. The people who created the Common Core Standards in mathematics did two things. One, they looked at the kinds of things that NAP asked. And two, they took the state standards from the best state standards that were identified. They took the best state standards in mathematics, at least. I don't know what they did for sure in English Language Arts. And instead of circling what was common in all of them, the word "common," right, you would think that's what they did, no. They took the best standards of the best standards in order to get started on what the Common Core Standards in mathematics should look like. That's good stuff. And NAP has been around a long time. It is far better than our CST. Okay. Remember the question I asked you? What is even? And how can you show that adding two even numbers, or two numbers, the number to itself, you get an even number? Well, here's some middle school responses on the first question. The definition of an even number is like they are multiplying by two because it goes 2, 4, 6, 8, and et cetera. That's what I like about math. Well, I'm glad the student likes math, but that is not a definition. Middle school. Another, you skip the odd number and that's the even number. You know how we in mathematics define odd numbers, by the way? We define what an even number is, meaning it's divisible by 2, or it's a multiple of 2, whichever way you want it. And then we say, "The odd number of the others." Okay? Now, a number that can be evenly divided by half, now you might think that's right, but it's not, can be evenly divided by 2, not half. See the difference? We have to get kids better at that. Go home and ask your middle school kids to give you a definition of what even is. Let's see how well they do, okay? 300 years ago, I taught a course last fall, a year ago. The History of Mathematics Education in the United States. We have a master of art, upload and plug. We have a master of arts in the teaching of mathematics in the math department at Cal State Dominguez. We're kind of unique, all right? One of the courses, the History of Math Education of the last 300 years, or in the United States since the 1700s. Well, at this point, this is one of the first textbooks that was written, actually, it was about 1600. You want to talk about cursive writing? It's actually been reprinted, obviously. And they had to write out a lot of stuff. And the kids went to school, well, they started going to school maybe about 20 days in a year, and then three months in a year, and then they didn't go to school very much. Okay? And the problem, to reduce 192 over 576. And they show you 192 is divided by 2, and 96 is divided by 2, and then you get 48 divided by 2, and 24 divided by 2, and you know nothing's changed in 300 years. The teachers I was teaching said, "Oh, my God, things haven't changed." 80% of what we do in mathematics is skill practice. Now, why is that? Well, one reason, although they didn't mean it this way, is when you put that CST in the way it was put in, to test some very good standards, by the way, although there are flaws in the previous standards, the test ends up driving what's done. So there's an answer to that. Okay. I'm almost done. There is an answer to that. If the test is going to drive the system, make it a damn good test. Because the other thing that drives the systems are the textbooks. Make them better. Some important facts for you to know, though. Here's where I get to the nitty gritty. I looked at your data. In 2011, 659 students were enrolled in geometry at Cal State Dominguez High School. In 2012, 570 students were enrolled in Algebra II, the next course, a 14% drop. In 2011, 573 students were enrolled in Algebra II, and only 402 students enrolled in Analytic Geometry and Trig, a 30% drop. You may think you're doing great, but as far as I know, students who are accepted at UCLA and UC Berkeley and all those places, they all have calculus in high school. They all take 12th grade math. And they're not just the kids who have gone through Accelerated Sixth, Accelerated Seventh, and then go to algebra, actually, in the seventh grade and so forth to get there. All kids in this school district should be taking calculus. I'm sorry. All kids. There's no excuse for it. And I think we have to accommodate that. I don't like that there aren't more calculus courses, AP Calculus courses. I don't like it at all. Does math matter? Well, what this is showing, and this was done in 1997, is that if all you have is pre-algebra and algebra, you're more likely to be unemployed. And these, and then those were not high school graduates either. No, these are high school graduates. If you have, they call high-level math, geometry, and Algebra II, which all of our kids take. And the reason they take it through Algebra II, the A through F requirements, then they stop. They shouldn't be stopping. They're not competitive. So I'm going to finish with the good, the bad, and the ugly. Start with the ugly. Testing is still steering the ship, but I'm going to fight that now. Okay? That's another. The bad, not enough funds, and this is general, to work with the teachers to build lessons that help our students. I understand we started doing things here, but a lot more has to be done. The teachers in mathematics need assistance in being able to implement this. If we want those kids to not have that white sheet syndrome, if we want them to answer the questions on the new test, C-Back, I want them to go in there saying, "Oh, you know what? This test actually was pretty simple." That's the way you get a T. The good, I think the Common Core Standards are very good. They are a very good move towards where we need to be. I'm tired of being 300 years behind. And as I told, Tommy, we didn't get calculators in the classroom, at least now we're going to get computers.
Dr. Brimsey, can you explain why two-thirds of the kids in New York State failed the test that you're talking about?
They're on a card. Be glad to answer it. It's on a card.
Okay. I never put two professors at the beginning of anything. One thing to know here. I had all these flip charts, Ross Perot-like, that I was going to do. I'm just going to speak for five minutes. I have a lot of opportunity to speak, and a lot of you have had a chance to, to hear some of my thoughts. So I'm just going to try to keep it real simple, three key things, and then turn it over so we can hear from the teachers and the principals. One, regardless of how you feel about how Common Core got here, it's a great opportunity for us to revisit our curriculum and our technology. That's one thing I want to make sure I make very clear. We're in a formative stage. This is not a summative stage right now. We're right in the middle of figuring this out. There's a lot of stuff to figure out. And that's actually my third point. There is a lot of stuff to still figure out. I'm saying that because many of, much of the anxiety that's coming through in the community and a lot of the questions I'm getting, a lot of the dialogue I'm having, is people want a nice, neat, finalized product. And it is not. It's not because we're not there. It's not because we've been negligent. It's not because we did something wrong. Literally, every school district in the state of California is there right now. So I understand that, and I want to acknowledge that. The great opportunity, the board last year elected to make this our first goal in terms of starting to look into it and really examining it. This year, we're at that phase where we're trying to look at how we're going to implement it next year. We are along with another 1,100 school districts in the state of California that have all said we would like to take on the Common Core. I think we should be focusing our energy on how we mediate that process and not having discussions about whether we're doing it or not. It's not terribly different from what we currently do. There are some differences. There's literacy across every content area that may be different for some teachers. We know what good teaching and learning looks like. We need to make sure that that's where we're at. I mentioned that it's a formative stage. Formative meaning we're trying to assess where we're at now. It's not done. I think that's very important. We are at the point where we are rolling our sleeves up, and our teachers need the space to be able to figure this out. The assessment is going to be somewhat different. That's something we're going to be working on. There's no secret, I think, in the district that we have not provided enough professional development and time and space for our teachers, and we're trying to do that from a district perspective. And lastly, I want to finish in my five minutes. I'm going to give you a little bit of analogy about building a house. And this is kind of, I think, where things are different right now. Usually, when we're going to rebuild a house or build a house, we draw architectural plans. We have engineers look at it. We have it all covered. And then we start building. The state is asking us to do something very different. They've only figured out the foundation, and they've only figured out maybe the main structure. We don't even have some of the standards figured out for social studies. Science just came maybe a month and a half ago. But yet, English Language Arts and math are here, and that's what we're really working on. I mean, we're not teaching the other subjects, but this is very different from how we think. We usually would not begin an endeavor until we had it all thought out. That is what the state is asking us to do. They're saying, "Listen, we're moving here. It's research-based, it's evidence-based, but yet, I'm here to tell you, there is still much we need to look at. There is much we need to dialogue about. If you're excited, teachers are excited, be excited. For those that are concerned, be concerned, but be concerned in a way where we continue this dialogue. Some great questions have come up lately, especially at the board meetings. Keep them coming, but keep them coming in a way where we're figuring out how we can implement the best education possible. This is a great opportunity." With that, I want to hand it over. I'll be around later. Obviously, I have a chance to ask some questions, and I obviously have, very excited here for the teachers. With that, Gina Stuckler.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for inviting me and asking. I am a new administrator, but I've been in the district for quite a while in several different positions. So I have the advantage of loving your children still. I want you to know, as administrator, I'm going to speak from the administrator point of view. We truly work, 100% of our efforts and energy go towards your children all day long. Every conversation we have, it's around the children. Every conversation we have, it's around the children. Everything we do at the district, everything we're doing as administrators, every time we walk into a classroom, it's all about the kids, and this is no different. We are serious about what we do, we work hard. We know this district is a tough district to be in, because you are right behind us, making sure we're doing everything for your children. And we love that about this district. So, we will keep pursuing, we will dig deeper, we will keep doing what we've always done in this district, and that's successful practices. Success, success, success. We've had that, we will keep it. I just want you to know, we're working as a united force in making sure that happens. It's not us against them, us against each other. We're together educating your children. So, I, I want you to know that from administrator point of view, we sit with the teachers every day, we're working with your children, your children every day, and we will keep doing that, every day through this. We are just at the beginning of the twenty-first century. We are just at the beginning of this process. So, we'll keep working hard. Just want you to know that, from the administrators. I've prepared a poem about how Common Core is my career. And I guess Joan, I can't see in the room, but I guess we're on iOS two-point-oh, maybe two-point-oh-one, because, you know, we have updates monthly with these new ones, and they're great, by the way. They're all great updates. Um, I've been asked to speak here tonight, and thank you for having me. I'm a first-grade teacher, and gotta say, it's much easier to speak to a room full of five, six, and seven-year-olds than it is to, if I crack a joke or make a funny face, work with me. Um, I'm gonna just hit on three things really quickly. Um, I think that what might be important to you is how Common Core looks in my classroom, um, how it impacts my students and their learning, and how it's affected me professionally as a teacher. So, how it looks in my classroom, um, Joan mentioned learning targets, and I have them posted daily. Students anticipate them, they're telling me, "Where are the learning targets? I need to know what I'm learning, Mrs. Pierce." And, um, they're up there. And, um, there's no, I'm not in control of everything, I'm giving it to them so that they can have a piece of that control. And, um, those learning targets reflect the depth of knowledge, so there's four levels, and a lot of the, the level one and two, foundational skills, and practice, and the level three and four, those really sum up the unit, and, um, are much bigger and more, more work. Um, in first grade, we are working, Dr. Prinsky, we are working on the Pythagorean theorem. So, just want you to know. They've got a love of math. Um, I'm gonna just give my learning target example, you can ask them if I feel like it. Um, another, uh, immediate thing you'd see in my classroom is feedback, active feedback, it's huge, it's a two-way street. My students will tell, they, they give me feedback, and I give them feedback. Um, but we're, it's constructive, and it's to, um, what they're doing specifically. So, it's not "good job," but something specific to what they're doing and corrective, and there's always a chance for them to correct whatever it is they're working on. Um, and they will correct me. So, I have to bring a lot of humble pie into the room. Um, impact on my students, whether my, and I teach first grades, whether emergent or front readers, we really dive into literature, and yes, you've heard that there's been a lot of, um, talk about putting nonfiction into the, the classroom, and I love it. Still love all my literature, but I do bring a lot of nonfiction and trying to find everything I can, especially with technology, I love technology, and, um, closed reading is a strategy. Um, it's just a repeated reading of a, um, of a text and then an, an analysis, and there's, Joan taught me today, there's twelve steps to it, it's a twelve-step program. First step is like, "Sisters." And that's when, we're chatting about, like, looking for friends, because we were so excited about, um, that's, I think, I think the unifying thing is those strategies and, you know, the use of technology for those. Um, a big thing with, um, the, um, literature now is that children are making, um, connections from text to self, text to text, and text to the world, um, that's a big, big thing. And there's a lot of struggle in the classroom, and that's a really hard thing, I think, for a teacher, and I love the term you use, the sage on the stage, um, Joan, and, um, I really try to step away and try to stop controlling what I'm, you know, what's happening, and really give my student, it takes a lot of planning, but give them a chance to struggle and learn, um, and really solve some really multi-step problems. Um, we're thinking deeply, we're criti, we're thinking critically, there's a lot more struggle, and that's where that effective feedback is really, really important, because I can validate their efforts, and they validate my effort as well, um, with how we are learning together. Um, uh, another big thing is metacognition, thinking about our thinking, and the, the kids are doing that, um, as well. Um, Common Core is really about across disciplines, and that's really a big deal. And we're still working on fluency with numbers, it's just, you know, we're solving world problems, um, how many minutes before my mouth goes completely dry? Um, lastly, I'll sum it up, how it's affected me professionally at Common Core. Um, I, the collaboration's been amazing, um, with, uh, teachers you just don't get to talk to. We go to professional development days, in the past, it was kinda like, we'd sit and listen, and now we're really talking to each other, and that's a really big deal, because those ideas, and I'll speak from experience, really only grow when we get to collaborate with each other. And, you know, just today, I, we were looking at units of study and how we could, um, you know, just implement them, and what it would look like in our classroom and make it comfortable for our teaching style. Um, it's a common endeavor, we're all working together, and it's united us. Um, change is never easy, and it's really scary, but I think together, we, we, we trust each other to kinda, you know, to get there, to get to that, um, it's the journey, not the destination. Um, and of course, I always wanna improve my practice, because I love my job, and I wanna do the best for your children, um, and I really feel like the Common Core drives that. Like I said, this has not ever been anything that we've experienced since my time in the district of ours, um, so this is really a good time. So, thank you.
All right, Joan's getting my short presentation prepared. So, I'll just take a second to say, my name's Michael Warner, I actually teach on this campus, in, in US history, and I wanna thank you guys for coming tonight, 'cause I know it takes a lot for you to be here, and just to share your numbers that I see really shows your dedication to your students and your concern about their education, which is great, 'cause I hope that I share that same concern about your children as you do. And, um, that's why, when I was asked to speak tonight, I was excited and happily I happily accepted the opportunity to speak to you guys, because I love showing off what your students do, not myself. I love showing off what your students have done. So, since I teach middle school, and it's that kinda that middle grade, and I get to go middle, I'll keep it short, and I'll show you lots of pictures, 'cause that's what my students like to see, they don't like to do as much writing as I do, they like to listen to me talking, or stare out the, stare out the door while I talk, and then look at a lot of pictures. So, I'm gonna show you some pictures, a little student work, and kinda see how Common Core has affected me this year. I have to say, when I first got into this, yeah, I'll get rid of that, so you can listen to me first. When I first got into this year, um, I was excited about the revitalization I knew my career was gonna take under Common Core. I've been doing this for eight years, it doesn't seem like a lot, but for me, I like to change about every three to four years, so I was kinda, I was getting kinda in a rut of, how am I gonna change what I'm doing? Can't change too much, 'cause these standards are so set. And then Common Core came around, and at first I thought, "Wow, this is like trying to take a drink out of a fire hydrant. It's almost impossible, there's so much information imploded at me." But then, as I took a step back and started thinking about how I'm gonna do this, it really has affected this year in a very positive way, and that's kinda what I wanna show you guys tonight. I'm gonna start with this, this is something that was created by my wife and I last year through the Smarter Balance Assessment, when I went to a few meetings at the end of the year. And what it is, is it's pretty much an umbrella of why I teach, and this is kinda like the Common Core umbrella of why we teach, why we're here, what do we do in our classrooms. And I give this to, as a department head, I give it to my department people, and I tell them, "Go ahead and look at that, and as you do your unit, make sure you're covering these things." And I know we're all great teachers, but some of them are like, "You know, I'm not really hitting the computer technology the way I should." So, they put a little checkmark by that, and they know in the next unit, they wanna hit that. And this is only possible because of Common Core has given us these tools to say, "We know you're great teachers, but are you meeting everything that these kids will need to have success at the next level?" So, this is kinda like the overarching theme that I follow throughout my year, I wanna make my units, and then I'll kinda move quickly, 'cause I know we're pressed for time. So, I do wanna hear you guys' questions, super excited about that. All right. The first way that my year has been changed was through something called closed reading. In college, all I did was read, because that's all you do as a history major. And then, when I got to teaching, I realized, you know, I'm not reading enough with the kids, and I don't like reading out of the book, because that's absolutely boring, I just can't do it, kills me. So, I tried to find readings for my students, and then I got introduced to this closed reading last year by the TOSs, and I said, "You know what? This might work for me." So, this was our first attempt at closed reading, and what you'll see is, there's a story on the left, and then the kids writing on the right. In the past, when I gave a story, we read it, we answered three to four questions, and then we moved on, and the kids hated reading. We've done three or four of these, and each one, I get a little better at it and ask you the kids, and now, when we read our stories, they ask for these closed readings. The action, can we do it? Because number one, they get to talk to each other about it, or is it just quietly read to themselves, or listen to me read, or do popcorn read, or one reads after the other? And then they get to break down the text, and they get to ask thought-provoking questions, as you see up there, and I know if you wanna look at this in more detail, I have a binder here, or I can, you can email me, and I can get you all this information. But on this closed reading, what I've done with the kids has really been a positive thing, is I've let them kinda ask questions about the story, I've asked them about the story, I've told them to give me some words to define, and I've had them kinda do a little essay prompt at the bottom. And I did this because I know the assessment is gonna change, 'cause we're not gonna do the CST assessment of fifty to six-hundred multiple-choice questions, it tells you if you know history. So, by doing this, I'm preparing them for the upcoming test in all their subjects. And you can see, before, I might ask one question about this, but now, we're really breaking down the text, and they're actually enjoying reading, which is great, 'cause an eighth grader, I've had a lot of struggles having kids enjoy reading, but they're enjoying it, and that's a great thing for me. Next, what I wanna talk about is driving questions. This is something I've always done, I've always had essential questions in my lessons, but now I can actually take driving questions, and it's one question that is really gonna be the overarching theme of my unit. I ask the kids this question on the first day of the unit, and every day, we revisit it, and at the end of the, at the end of the test, or at the end of the unit, this becomes the essay test forum, and we really break down the material. And every day, when we're going through something, a lesson, they can refer back to this question, and it really makes sure they get everything they need to get, and they understand my big idea of what I need to get across to them, versus just the, "How do I get what I need to do to pass the test?" So, kinda like brings it all together. History, you call that common threads, 'cause you have a thread through history. It's not just one up to the other, it all is related, and that's what the driving questions have done for me. This, again, a tool given by Common Core. Next is learning targets. You should've heard a lot about this, and for those who have my kids, if you didn't raise your hand when they asked about learning targets, if you've been to my class, you've seen learning targets. This is something I'm getting better at. This is where I give up control of the class, and I tell the kids, "Okay, you're gonna fill this out, let a kid run it, and you're gonna tell me how you wanna be assessed, and how you wanna do the knowledge." Now, as a teacher, I do have a little control issue, I have trouble letting go, so I always give them this to go with these learning targets, to make sure they're actually doing what I need them to do. But I do take a step back, and I let them look at this, and I let them tell me, "Mr. Warner, this is how we best learn information, and this is how we like to be assessed on it, 'cause this is how we feel we'll do best." And, and I know the, the drawback to this, "Let's pick the easiest one there is." Problem is, when they take the test, they know it's not gonna be easy, so I get for them to pick the easiest one, like I thought they would, because they generally do wanna learn, 'cause they do wanna do well on the test, and they do wanna pass the class, which is usually the goal. So, I do give them this, which kinda helps, kinda helps them cheat, and I didn't know that little animation, little animation move, that's kinda cool. Doesn't blow my computer. But, and I give them to this, and they get to use this to make sure they get what they need, they choose how they wanna assess, and what's cool is when they pick the fun ones, I'm looking over here in the C category, and at first, they say, "Well, let's do a quick write, oh, it's boring," and it's gotta write a bit, and then they say, "Well, let's make a play about it, let's do an exit slip." And then this list that you see here in my classroom, there's about seven more things, 'cause they say, "Mr. Warner, the other teacher does this really great, and it's really fun, let's try this one as the, the assessment." I say, "Well, of course, Mr. Kachak, he has some great ideas in seventh grade, I know you guys love those, let's do those in my class." And they kinda feel like they gave him those ideas, so they're really involved and invested, because it's like, hey, this was my, what I brought to the table, and they're buying in, and they're involved, and they really wanna be a part of it. That's the learning target tricks that I have. The other one, the, one of the last ones is the improved assessments. The last seven years, all I've done is give multiple-choice tests, and I give an essay now and again when I could, but under Common Core, I no longer have to do that, 'cause I went to a lot of college classes, and I only had a few that were all multiple-choice, and there was three hundred kids in the room, and it was usually freshman classes, and I hated them. I'm a terrible multiple-choice test taker. And so, I hope that doesn't mean that I'm a terrible student, I'm not very smart. So, I wanna give them alternate assessments, because that's kinda what they need. And so, now my tests, this isn't, this will be the end part of the first test we took, and then I do give multiple-choice, short answer, maybe an essay, and then I give them a reading, and from that reading, I say, "Take this reading, cite evidence from the reading to tell me you know what it was trying to say," which kinda takes us back, this computer goes quick, to these closed readings, 'cause that's what we did in the closed readings. So, it's telling me, "Can you deva, can you devour this information and actually put down what you need?" The first time I gave this test, I have to be honest, there were tears, there was hair pulling, it took them two hours.
That was with parents.
There was a lot of emails from the parents. And it took me about a week to grade them. And I wrote down the good, productive struggle, that's what I called the first time we did this. And then I did it again, there was less tears, everybody kept their hair, it took them an hour, I had to cut parts of it, which is okay, because that's what we do as teachers. And then now, we're doing it a third time, and they're excited about it, because in the past, by the third test, I had a, I had a population that was saying, "I can't do multiple-choice, I'm gonna fail," and they had already given up. With this system, nobody's given up, 'cause they've all seen the results, and they all see how they can improve, and believe me, their test scores are about ten percent higher than the last year, which makes them real happy, which is my goal, is to make the kids happy. Is it? Is that why we're here? We have some of the resources available, some of the conferences I've been to, Smarter Balance Toolkit, the TOSs, these two lovely ladies here come and talk to me once every couple of weeks, tell me what I'm doing wrong, what I'm doing right, help me out, so it's not like I'm in this alone, and none of this was available until Common Core came around and said, "Hey, this is coming, get with it." So, all these resources were here because of the Common Core. Finally, I'm gonna leave you with this, you can just read this, I'll leave it up. This actually was emailed me today, and it's kinda like, you know, if you're a parent, here's what the Common Core does for you. And I wanna read something that I was talking to a friend who works for Etowah, the school district, another really high district, and he's having the same panicking parents that we're having, panicking students, panicking teachers, believe me, teachers, churches, all the fences, everybody else about these standards. And he said this, this was a pretty cool quote, I thought I got from him. He said, "Teachers are pretty darn smart. We will not let your children leave our rooms without the knowledge needed for the next level and life in general. Teachers will adjust and improve when needed. Your children will not be left behind or negatively affected." And I like that I said that. We are pretty darn smart. If we weren't smart, we wouldn't be entrusted with teaching your kids. And I promise you, at least at my school, we're not gonna let your kids down, they're not gonna fall through the cracks, and we will productively struggle, but as you can see through what I've done, everything I've shown you is the only thing new this year. So, eighty percent of what I do is exactly the same, 'cause I really liked it, but I'm just getting to improve. I'm putting my greatest days, and I'm making them my everdays. Thank you.
Wow, how do you follow that one? Uh, so, um, my name's Christopher Muller. Uh, I'm at Peninsula High School, and I've had the luxury, I call it, to be able to be teaching at almost every secondary school in this district. And I've worked with the communities, uh, parents, uh, students, faculty, administration, at all of those different schools, and I've really seen firsthand the kind of place we have in this district of ours. Uh, it exemplifies what tonight is, when you look around the room and you see three hundred-plus parents that are excited, nervous, tenuous about what we are going to embark on in the next few years. But they're here because they wanna know more. And when we see that, we know we have little chance of failure and the greatest chance of success, because it, every teacher will say, it is... Because, every teacher will say, it is what we do in the classroom is about a fraction of what is going to be our children's success. It is what happens at home that makes all the difference. And so knowing that we have this support and this commitment from the community that our educational program is that important to you, we know it's going to be successful. That being said, I can't possibly do what Michael did about explaining how impact and the PowerPoint and everything, my God, it's beautiful. But I can't talk about a few things that Common Core has impacted in at least for my students and for myself. First and foremost, the real eye-opener for me was looking, and I hope you have the opportunity to do this, looking at the Smarter Balance Assessment Practice Test that has been distributed by Smarter Balance. And when I looked at that the first time, I went through and got to see what would be assessed. And that, when we say, we teach to the test, that was the eye-opener for me, because then I started saying, wow, this is what I do. And what was exciting for me is the fact that I could say, wow, this is what I do. And I think that was one of the nice things that's going to be part of the transition here is, as Joan said, this new shift of education works to the strengths of our district. We have an articulation from kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade. But we also have students that have been assessed up to this point on their recall, their memory, their ability to remember facts. And that's what the state tests have always sort of looked at. And now we're looking at how much more analysis and comparison and contrasting and being able to detail and give examples. Well, that's what our students do already. And so we can show now, not just the one level, fact-based level of being able to recall this date and this time, and in my subject, this scientific factor. Now we can go into, now the comparisons of details, of quotation of, and we can get the students to really get into what we really know that they already know. And that's the beauty of this. For my particular subject, because Language Arts has really gone into all of the subject matters, we're going to be looking in much more detail of the kinds of readings that we have our students do. So quite frankly, most of the reading that students do are text-based at this point. So if there is to be a shift in science, we are going to be looking at putting and implementing more, informational reading that is primary sourced, or technical or digital sourced, trade book, that those kinds of examples where we can have students use real world, real experience reading, and then use that to comprehend at a deeper level, looking at it from various angles. One thing that the practice test showed is, most of the test questions that were in Language Arts were embedded in science. And so they would ask the students to read a science primary source, and then use the English analysis of that. So it's going to be critical for science teachers to be able to provide our students with the instruction to interpret the language, the ability to find how to read that source, analyze it properly, know how to then use that along with the English teacher, and be able to answer all of the kinds of questions that the new state tests will be asking. As far as personally, we, in my department, are really excited about being able to work together and talk about our practice in pedagogy, and talk about how we do what we do. At our department meetings, we are not just talking about whether or not we should allow kids to go on field trips, and what we do with their assignments if they, you know, are gone for that day. Now we're actually talking about our practice, and that's really a very exciting thing. And as Joan said earlier, if we're talking about our practice, and we're excited about what we do, that can only lead to really good things. And I think that that's one thing that we can all embrace as a community of learners. So that's where I think we're moving into the really, the most positive of directions. So thank you for being here.
You know, I want to thank all the panelists for their presentations, but especially the teachers. You know, we administrators, board members, superintendents, we sort of know when we cross that line from the classroom into administration that, you know, we're putting ourselves on the line and making tough calls, and have to get up in front of parents and defend decisions that we make. And it's school night. But, you know, the teachers, and these three jumped at this opportunity to be here. And I want to thank all three of you for being here. Okay, so now we're going to move to the question and answer of our person, and we've gone through the questions and kind of clumped them together by similarities. If we don't read your question, hopefully we're reading one similar to it. But the first question will be for Walker to explain, there's a lot of information out there, and tonight's not really about this, but we do want to address it. Is, there's concern about the information that's being gathered through the testing. So the question is, please explain the questions, the personal questions, and the data mining aspect of Common Core.
I can do without the mic, I think I'd say, you know, we can have a separate session on all the... I'm sorry. We can have a separate session on all the accountability systems that the state makes, districts jump through, and all the process we have to go through. I was with a group of superintendents yesterday and asked the same question, because we're hearing this. Nobody is aware that we'll be doing anything different in terms of sharing information with the state and the federal government through testing and work I've been doing for the last ten or fifteen years, nothing has changed, okay? As we go forward in the process, if we learn new things or come up with new information, we'll share it. But we've been sharing information, because the state mandates it through all sorts of accountability systems, for fifteen or twenty years, and nothing, as far as I know, is changing up at this point in time. But we will keep you informed if something changes like that.
Okay, so we have a question that says, a little bit, a question about what the test will look like. We've heard there'll be more essay-type answers required, who will correct these papers as they're funding for examiners. The S-PAC, actually, the practice test has been on our district website since last July. So if you really want to go on and take a look at it, we've even talked with PTA and possibly about having a day where we invite parents in to take the test and help guide them through that. There are four kinds of test questions. There are still some multiple choice questions, there are selected response questions, there are short answer kinds of questions, there are activity-based, where they drop and drag and map. And there is a writing component, some of it is able to be scored on the technology side. But the performance tasks, which do involve a lot of writing, I'll be honest with you, this is part of what Tony was talking about, that's yet to be shared with us, how that will be assessed and graded. You know, if you're a middle school person, you know about our seventh and sixth and eighth grade kids take the RWA, and teachers meet and assess those. And it's very powerful learning. It may end up being that there's some process like that, but the state requires. But we haven't gotten that information yet on that part of the test. The rest of the test will be scored through the technology. There's no cost to the district for that. And then the second question was, and maybe some of the teachers can speak to this, how is creativity addressed, especially since the focus, I think, it says very little place for creative writing, because we talk a lot about this evidence-based writing. But as teachers, where's the aspect for creative writing?
So for creative writing, at least in the middle school, this Common Core has given us the ability and the time to do as much or as little as we want. Last week, I did something on the Bill of Rights, the first ten minutes of the Constitution. And instead of just teaching it and going over creativity-wise, I was able to say, you know what, let's make a story about this. And then the kids write a story about an amendment in action today, they're going to see it, they're going to present it, they're going to go picture with it. So Common Core has kind of given us the ability to be as creative as the kids want. You know, you know your kids more than we do. And you know the grades are going to be really artistic, and the grades are going to want to sing. It just changes with the grade level. And it gives us the ability to be as creative as we want, as we choose to be, because we don't have those time constraints of, well, I have to get to this date by this time. We get to go whatever we want, as much as the teacher wants, in reality.
So will the teachers change the way they grade to allow productive struggle? And you know, the conversation about how we grade and report to you, that's a very powerful conversation taking place in the discussions among teachers. And certainly, the higher you get to the high school level, you know, a lot of what we have to do is dictated by what the colleges need, the A-QG requirements, and the grade point averages and all of that. But that's an ongoing conversation, and especially at the elementary level, very robust conversation as we approach the first report card, about the alignment of our standards-based report card with some of the changes we're already seeing in the classrooms. But those conversations are incredibly powerful, because this conversation about productive struggle and allowing students to struggle and not have to master it right away and validating that is going to have to affect some of our grading processes. But I don't think we can say we're there at this point.
As Joan said, it is also a process. So as students go through the process, the longer they are part of the process, the impact will lessen. In other words, a kindergartner that starts with this process is going to develop the abilities to adapt to what we're doing. And certainly at the high school, we wouldn't want to be changing any of that yet until we start getting students that are sort of used to that process. So we wouldn't be transitioning at the high school as quickly as perhaps the elementary schools would be.
Yeah, and I think Michelle used the phrase, the journey is the destination. We use that a lot in our professional development, because, you know, this is a journey we've been on as educators, will always be on, will never be there, it'll constantly be evolving. But what's exciting is, we have momentum and procedures and processes and dialogues in place now that are really making that possible. The next question, I don't know if the questioner wrote Michael's name on this, or if you guys did, but it was a question about the emphasis on group work in Common Core. You hear a lot about collaborative learning. And let's just back it up, because group work has always been important in the classroom. Collaborative learning, I became a teacher in nineteen eighty-eight, and was going to cooperative learning workshops, and then giving cooperative learning workshops. It's not new to Common Core. But it says, the question goes on to say, with the difference between As and Bs are so tough, especially in honors classes, how are we evaluating students in group projects? And this individual says several times this year, in middle school and high school, children were given a score based on a classmate's wrong answer. You know, how are we going to address it? Can we opt out of this part of Common Core? Well, again, group work and collaboration is an important part of the instructional program. It's about balance, not everything should be collaborative and cooperative. And I don't know if one of the teachers wants to address how we address grading.
I hate group projects. I always have, because I always felt, I did all the work, and everyone else got my grade. So I developed a process... Okay, so I developed a process of grading that would work to be able to have every student responsible for themselves. Every week of a project, or every three days, however long the project is, the student would be given a different role. At one point, they would be the leader of the project, and during that time, they were responsible for certain things, and that would dictate their grade, but also the grade that they were giving to the other members of the group. And they worked as a group to decide whether or not that was an appropriate grade for them. Then as each person took their leadership role, they had the opportunity then to be a part of that. Very little of my group projects are based on the group. There has to be some level of what transpired between every member of the group. But most of my group projects are based on the actual work that that person has done, and then their leadership role at that point. It is one of those things that, as you go through the process, the first times that I've done this, there's a lot of crying and pulling a pair, and emails from parents. And then as I learned more about how to work through this, and to get a really fair way of assessing students, and getting their responsibility of being responsible for themselves, not just being responsible to get the work done, but being responsible for themselves, is that process, I think, will be learned throughout the district. And as we go through group projects, I think, sharing, I got a chance to share that idea just this beginning of the school year, with not just members in my own department, but also members at the other high school. And they were writing notes and going, wow, this is a great way to do group projects. So that's what Common Core allows us to do, is to be able to share some of the ideas that we have that can actually really benefit all of our students.
And to add to that, as part of this professional development, you're absolutely right. There's group work, if it's not done right, it is not purposeful and meaningful for kids. And part of the conversation we've had with teachers is that, what's the difference between group work and real collaborative work and individual accountability in that process? Michelle?
I feel like as a first-grade teacher, I'm really responsible for scaffolding those qualities in a student. And we do a lot of things like, you know, think, hear, and then we do a share, so you can tell I'm a first-grade teacher, because we're always doing something, or acting, or singing. And that's really a formative part of assessment, and I'm watching each child in that. You know, we do literature circles in first grade even, and you talked about having jobs. And so we're really trying to scaffold those responsibilities for kids. So they're ready for you.
Okay, so the next question, and I think probably at that table we'll have a response. If our students in district are so high-performing, why are we implementing the Common Core?
I have nothing to lose. They are high-performing. Look, they can walk into that, as somebody said to me recently, they can walk in linefolded to the CST and get a score eight hundred. Okay? I'm going to tell you the truth. The truth is that UCLA this year has seven thousand students from overseas, okay? And these are students who are going to go into mathematics and science. This is a very affluent community, and we have an obligation. We have an obligation as this society to do even more. These kids have tremendous potential. In my viewpoint, doing well on the CST math test doesn't say much, okay? It doesn't say much. There is a lot more to be said. And so why is it that sixty-six percent of the kids entering the university have to take remedial math? Some of them from PV. Why is it that fifty percent of the kids that come to the university drop out or fail calculus at the first semester? Now, maybe your percentages are different. But let me tell you, I came from a very good school district when I was raised too. And none of my friends went into math. This was many years ago. I started teaching the new math. Now, the real new math. Okay? And let me tell you, it did the best thing for mathematics and for the future of mathematics that ever has been in this country. There is a lot of stuff in your textbook that came out of that era. There were a lot of people that went on and got PhDs. The number of PhDs, I think, percentage raised in mathematics went up thirty-five percent. But there are still very few girls getting PhDs in math, physics, chemistry, engineering. Where do you think they're gonna come from? What do you think we need? Okay, in this state, in this country, and this state is a big part of this country, we wanna really do things. These kids need to know English Language Arts. They need to do it well. They need to speak correctly. You know, when somebody calls me from, somebody once called me from TRW. One of my students had applied to TRW. He was a computer science major, but had me for calculus or four quarters or something like that. And he said, "There's two things I wanna know." He says, "I can look at this transcript," I can tell he did well in calculus. "Can he work in a team? And can he communicate?" There's a lot of stuff out there that these kids need to know. They don't just need to be able to read. They need to give very articulate answers and explain themselves. I'm tired of reading Pablo. I'm tired of kids, you know what happens? Ask social science people that teach civics. When kids can't come up with a response based on real information, they start going personal with the other kids. They start saying things like, "Well, you don't know, you're just stupid." They'll say all kinds of things in the high school. Maybe not in your schools. I've never taught yours, but actually I did teach a course once in your schools. And I've had a lot of your teachers work with me in projects. One of the things that the Common Core, perhaps one of the most important things that Common Core is doing for us, is saying, okay, they know the basic skills in PV. Let's go deeper. Let's get kids who really can take us those next steps. Let's get kids who are gonna develop the next thing that we haven't even thought of we wanted. This is a community that is in the heart of a technological place. We should have more kids going into this. And you'd be surprised where they are also used in Wall Street, et cetera.
So, you know, any one of these questions we could... Then you can... Okay.
We all were, Walker, you were there. Walker, excuse me. You were there, so hand in hand with us, on the phone, making calls. The board in the district was engaged with us making those calls. Get that funding, we need that funding. But where's the courtesy of having us? Before this, you're talking about implementing. Where's the courtesy of getting us involved and talking about this? PV does not need this. These standards are so below us. My son is in the fall semester of the senior year. He already got a college acceptance. What we're talking about here is not PV. We are way above this. We can make strategic fixes to the system that you're saying is... It's just, it's just reprehensible.
Okay, well, okay, so... Yes, yes. And I'm gonna ask you to please respect the forum that we have. If you have a question and you wanna give it out. People are here for information. If your question is not being answered, we can address questions in other kinds of forums as well. We are here to give you an overview. As our WordPress attorney has said, we are implementing Common Core. We are going that way. You're hearing from educators who, again, believe it is a good direction to be going. It's founded on the success we've had. It's determined by the direction that our kids need to go. And it's still about good education. Okay, but that is not the forum for the question. We're going to continue. I have the questions right here. Okay, so we'll continue.
But we're here to have a civil discussion. Okay, so these people are here, they donated their time, they're volunteering their time to have a discussion. They have it, okay? So we're here now, so we can agree that, we can agree to disagree. Okay? So let the discussion, the questions are here. These people are volunteering their time to be here, so let the discussion take place.
So let's move on to the next question, because I know there's a lot of people in the audience who submitted questions. And we do wanna get through them. This one has to do with teachers, and I think our teachers can help answer this. How do we ensure that teachers comply with the direction that we're going? There are some that have been outspoken about being against Common Core. And how do we hold teachers accountable that they're going to be doing these things? So, you know, from a teacher perspective?
I think results will drive instruction. As you work with students that are finding ways to be more engaged in their own educational process, when they feel empowered to be a part of their own educational process, they leave that classroom with an energy. And when they go to a classroom that doesn't promote that, teachers that found themselves in the past being that exceptional teacher, and they won't feel that energy anymore, they're going to be making adjustments to their classroom so that they get that same energy again. So I think that will drive the success of this program as well.
When it comes to teacher accountability, just like with everything else, you guys are accountable. The way we teach is gonna come back in the emails, the feedback, everything we get from you. If I do a good job teaching your kids, regardless of what system it's under, you're gonna let me know, you're gonna let my bosses know, you're gonna let everybody know, because we aren't the same as you. We're all one group. In it for the betterment of the children. That's why we're here, that's why we show up every day, that's why I'm here at eight-thirty at night. So accountability for me is the success of your students at the next level. And believe me, as an eighth-grade history teacher, they come back and they let me know, your class was too easy, your class was too hard. Here's what I liked, here's what I'm doing at the next level. It's not gonna change our Common Core. It's just gonna get better.
We're always gonna be held accountable. Right? We're held accountable and will continue to be held accountable. We have evaluation systems. We talk about that all the time at our principal meetings at the site. We talk about it with our teachers. We're no longer going to be sitting behind the desk as administrators and just manage. We have to be more in the classroom, we have to be in the classroom more. We have to help the teachers, guide the teachers. It's a coaching model. And with a coaching model comes better evaluations. So we'll have much better evaluation systems going forward.
The next question says, "Since Common Core dictates eighty-five percent of the curriculum, who will decide the PV, PU, as district's fifteen percent allowance?" Let me first clarify some misinformation. First of all, standards are not a curriculum. Standards are simply that. They're the list of things kids should know and be able to do and understand. But the curriculum is the robust body of the framework, as Dr. Prinsky refers to, of how we deliver content, what content, how the instruction is organized, all of those pieces. So Common Core is not the curriculum. It is a body of standards. And yes, we, as a Palos Verdes district, and I alluded to this in the beginning, we have local control about how we build that curriculum to meet those standards. The eighty-five fifteen, I think is a misunderstanding. California adopted the Common Core, but they had the option as a state to add fifteen percent more of standards on top of what the national, you know, what the other forty-five states were doing. States were allowed to bring in more. So they added some things that they knew were important to continue to carry forward that maybe didn't show up in that Common Core final copy. So that's the eighty-five fifteen, if you're hearing those numbers. But I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to the curriculum question, but standards are not curriculum. We are very actively engaged in the process of looking at our curriculum, looking at our current practices. What are we doing that are successful? We continue those. What new and great things can we bring in to enrich and enhance and make our curriculum more twenty-first century for the world that you've heard described that these kids are gonna go into? They have to be aligned, yes, yes.
Yeah, this is where, when I mentioned earlier that there's a lot of work that needs to be done and where we're headed. With that, and I'm gonna raise some of the concerns I've heard at the board meetings and some others. So there is always a legitimate conversation to have a curriculum discussion. That's not something new because Common Core is here. I think what's been happening lately is some of the things that have come up, like, you know they're gonna teach this book, or we're gonna teach that book. Do you know we're gonna do this, do you know you're gonna do that? Those are legitimate conversations that communities should be having about curriculum. And there are always legitimate conversations to be having. They aren't necessarily new because Common Core is here. There are some things, some work we need to do around leveling. Is this the age-appropriate level that we wanna introduce this idea? Those are things that we really need to work on that don't come from the standards and that we need to figure out. Because there's a posting of one example of a question in a certain curriculum by a certain textbook company does not mean that's what our curriculum's gonna look like. Those are conversations we need to be having, and those are conversations I hope we have this year. A couple of examples of some things that have been brought up that we don't know. And I'm telling you, we don't know. GATE, how are we gonna assess who is in GATE or not? We don't know yet, the state hasn't told us. Last year, last year, huh. Last week, we found out that four of our elementary schools are nominated or eligible to be California Distinguished Schools. We're not gonna have testing this year, how we've known it. At least we're not gonna report it, or it's not gonna be reported back to us. I don't know when we're gonna have California Distinguished Schools again. I'm not saying it's never gonna happen. I'm not saying we're not gonna figure it out. But these are examples of some of those things that are in this process.
Oh, so... No, no, other districts don't know. I mean, the GATE question, and there was a question about GATE identification we were gonna get to, so since Tony brought that up. We use the CST as in...
Certain things we can control about how we assess. There are other things that we do not. Every district in the state of California is in this same process. Some are ahead of us. Some have been trying to implement Common Core units last year. I am not acknowledging that it is not problematic. That doesn't necessarily mean it is a problem. And I'd rather have us have a dialogue about how we can mediate that process instead of just going to the extreme on either side.
Yeah, you know, we're engaged in productive struggle, absolutely. Tony, this is possibly a question for you. I'm not familiar with this, but, you know, it comes up a lot about Race to the Top, that we're doing this because of Race to the Top. And it's really important to know that California was never a contender for Race to the Top. Never made the application, never went through that process for a lot of reasons. And was one of the last states, I think we alluded to earlier, to join the Common Core and adopt the Common Core because they really wanted to be thoughtful and careful about it. So that was not a contention. But it says the nine thirteen study mismatches in the Race to the Top. I don't know that study, are you familiar with that study? So, okay, well, we're not here to read a dissertation, but... Sure, we can take a look at it, but we can't address that question tonight if no one at the panel is familiar with it. Okay, can your child opt out of the field test this spring? We had this question last night. We had, as I said, this special ed meeting. As a parent, you have always had the option.
Joey, can I just, I think where the former question was coming from, 'cause I get this a lot, is kind of the political nature of whether this is coming from the federal government or the state government, or textbook companies behind this, all those different thoughts about how Common Core evolved and where we're at. And I think what's important to notice, nobody likes being told by the federal government or the state government what to do. It's kind of my initial point about the fact, no matter how you feel about how we received it or whether it's here, it's a great opportunity. You may not like the Common Core, you may not like how it's developed or where it came from. But we have not had an adjustment in standards in over a decade. We may have had the nicest house, to go with my analogy earlier. There's now new standards of how you build a house. There's now new efficiencies, there's now codes. It's not necessarily problematic for us to be looking at improving our education, regardless of the test scores and are we really preparing our students the best way possible. Similarly, technology. Technology is not inherently bad. Technology is a tool, just like a baseball glove for a baseball player or a bat. It only allows us to do something better than we've done before, especially only if you use it correctly. This is something that I also hear. We, yes, did approve a lot of money recently to get all the schools in the district up to baseline. Meaning, we want every school in Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District to have certain technological tools available for the students and the teachers. That's not a bad thing, and that's something we would have done no matter whether Common Core came or not. Worked out well, and now we have some funding to do it. So I just wanted to share this.
So on the question opting out, I mean, obviously, we don't encourage opting out. We can ask you to opt out, but as a parent, in the end, I think Joey said it well last night, you're your child's parent and that can happen. "How much additional time will students spend on Common Core testing compared to previous state testing?" Right now, when kids test, say, fifth grade, they probably spend about six hours of testing over the testing period times. If you think of what all the CST tests are, six, six hours or so. And the Common Core field test is supposed to be about three hours. So when you double that next year, when they take both English Language Arts and math, it'll be about six hours of testing. It's not expected to be that much, that much more. Two more. You know, I wanna address this, this one was written to me. And it said, "You know, as we told the school board," and I was at that school board meeting, "some teachers in the districts have not had good things to say about Common Core professional development so far and don't want subs taking their classes while they waste time at meetings." And why, you know, have we addressed this? And I will say, if you talk to some of those teachers who spoke that night and made that statement, they would have a very different thing to say. I want you to know, we were very responsive to the comments we heard that night. We called some of those teachers in. We've, you know, and Michelle's on one of our CIA committees. Michael's been involved. I know Mitzi Kress is here, one of her teachers was very outspoken that night. He's been very involved. We heard what they said, we called them in. They're shaping the direction of the professional development. Yes, we, I, you know, our department is shaping kind of what the conversation has to be, but they are much more involved and engaged in making, in leading that and helping facilitate that. And I will tell you, I will admit it, it's turned a corner. It's become much more powerful and engaging. And it was something that we were maybe a little slow to come to. I give you a million reasons why, but that doesn't matter. We're there now, and I can guarantee you that those teachers that spoke that night that this person's referring to would probably have something very different to say at this point. We heard them, we responded, they are engaged. And... How will we pay for this? This keeps coming up. So I'm gonna let Walker end on that.
And then I'll answer the question, and I'll say, we're gonna take all the questions. We're gonna have them written down, we're gonna summarize them, and we can post the answers on the web if we have a copy to the night. And we're gonna have other functions as the school year goes along. The state's committed money to implementing this. Okay? The state's committed money to implementing this, okay? We've already paid over the years, we obviously paid for teachers, we paid for instructional materials, we've paid for a very limited amount of professional development, that's because of budget cuts. The state has given districts one-time money to be spent this budget year, next budget year, on specifically implementing the Common Core in terms of getting ready for instructional materials, buying the technology, and providing professional development. It's restricted money. And so for us, it means somewhere in the neighborhood of about $2.3 million that'll be used for these purposes. We've had discussions at the board meeting, it was translated, in terms of what kind of technology do we need in order to be testing or be ready for the test for the spring? We're looking at instructional materials down the line, and obviously, we've been doing much, much more with professional development. So right now, the state's committed this money to the school districts around, all over California. But we also have other categorical money that we can use for professional development. So the funding is coming. With all things, with state and federal things, does it fully pay for it? It's hard to say at this time, but we are using the money wisely and we're gonna be using it for this purpose. And like I said, first of all, I just want to thank the people once more, and then we're gonna fund it for a beat out. We are gonna take all the questions seriously, we're gonna get them down, we're gonna get posted, we're posted on the web and respond to them. And I think just to kind of follow up and end it with something Tony has said, we're not buying into something just total package. We're looking at our instructional program around the district and determining what really works best for us. And that's what our focus area, we know our mission in terms of getting students ready for the next level, and we're working on that. And that'll always be our next mission. So we will continue to have these discussions, we will continue to involve the community in part of these kind of debates, and we will have further things to say as we go along with the process and give you more information. So thank you for coming out today.